Welcome to the War Room. This is the public square for the people of Gwinnett County. We have some areas that are in focus. That's going to be the school boards, the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, let me see, the Gwinnett County Commission and the city council. For these are the Achilles tendons of keeping the society together from a local level. And it's imperative that we get involved, decide what it is that we want on behalf of our families and our communities, and let our voice be heard. Back in 1996 is when I went to college. And when I got there, I redshirted as a freshman. And we got a brand-new coach. And when he got there, he had a mess on his hands. We had guys that were not going to class, getting in fights all the time. I mean, everything that you can imagine was going wrong. The graduation rate was down, and the team was looking raggedy. The appearance, I mean, it was just an awful sight. He got there, we were 2-9, I believe. I mean, a terrible record. But when he got in there, one of the, this, this, let me, let me pull him up so you can get a, get a picture. His name's LC Cole. He's one of the gentlemen that stood in the gaps for me as a young black, you know, young minority who grew up in one of the fatherless homes that many times the society, the way that things are going, you know, society starts to crumble, and the kid basically becomes victim of that situation. He had a lot of hard decisions to make. But what he focused on was our underlying character. Because what you do when you're not on the field, and in this case, in the field of life, it translates over, you know, in, 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 onto the field. So your success rate is not going to be what it needs, things that they, they focus on, on in the military. Because you cannot teach someone anything if they are not disciplined properly. So as a result, LC went on to take us to win not one, but two championship rings. From 2-9, I mean, the record was in the dirt. He had to make a lot of tough decisions. He shared something with me on yesterday when I spoke with him, because I called him just to thank him for all of his efforts. And because leadership matters. It does. I redshirted as a, he redshirted all of us, all of us freshmen that he recruited in. He had a five-year contract, so he wanted to make sure that the people that he brought in would go throughout the duration of his contract. So the crop that he planted would be able to be cultivated by him and give him an opportunity to turn things around. He knew what he was looking at before he took the job. And he went in, he made a lot of tough decisions. And as a result, we won 20 straight regular games. I'll never forget the first championship ring that we won. The team was down by two touchdowns, and I believe we had less than three minutes to go. That's just how bad we wanted it. But in that crunch time, we had to do everything right. So what did we lean on in that point? There are no fundamentals if you don't have discipline. That's what you have to lean on. So kudos to him. Now, there's no secret to the disciplinary problems that we've been having here in Gwinnett County school system. And we need sound, solid leadership. That's what we need. We don't need a bunch of running around talking about different things, oh, you know, this, this kid had a hard life and that one had a hard life. Look, I grew up just like many other people, not just, just black people. Everybody's not born with a silver spoon in their, in their mouth. I grew up in the projects in Birmingham, Alabama, and everybody that knows me knows that. But it was my coaches, it was my teachers, it was the administration back then who stood in the gap and held the line to make me make a choice of what direction I was going to go in. You don't remove the consequence because you feel sorry for someone. You have to be honest. You know, natural law does not remove consequences. So I, I want to bring a gentleman in who's running for school board District One. And with, and with all due respect, I invited Karen Watkins on this show because when Karen Hall held the District Two meeting, I spoke with Karen Watkins for an hour after, standing out in the freezing cold. And we talked about some of the issues and everything, and I said, and she accused the show of spreading disinformation and all kinds of stuff. And I said, well, I'll tell you what. You write a list of each item that you believe is disinformation. You come on the War Room, we'll let you speak, treat you with dignity and honor, and we'll let the people decide on what's falsehoods and what's not. It was just totally crickets at that point. So let me bring in Leroy Renell, her challenger for school board District One. Welcome to the War Room, Leroy. Oh, you got it, you got your mic muted. Can, can you hear me? Okay, your, your mic might be muted. Hold on, hold on a second. I, I still can't hear you for some reason. We may have to, we may have to reboot you. So let's, let's do that, sign out, sign back in. So we know we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. And we got to get strong leadership in place. And there are many challenges. And if we don't have people in there to make the right decisions on behalf of all the students, then we're definitely going to be in big trouble here. So let's see if we can get Leroy back. All right. Can you, we, we still can't hear you. Okay, let's, let's try this again. Can you exit out of the Zoom? Just exit out of the Zoom from your end and re-enter, and then we'll bring you back in. Let me do this here. All right, so we're going to have to try to get Leroy rebooted. So give us a second here to work through these technical issues that we have, you know. My crack production staff, which is just myself right now, you know, it's, it can be a few challenges here, but we're going to get this worked out. So give us just a few seconds to get this link back over to Leroy so he can get, get signed in. Because I know the people have been waiting to hear from him and just hear his perspective on everything that's been going on and happening in our county and what changes we need to make to, to get things back in line. We got, we got a lot of fights and everything. The morale is down, especially among teachers and bus drivers that we've been speaking with. They just feel like they don't have any power or backing in a, when kids do things and get in trouble. They just, you know, you have kids getting sent to the office, they're right back in the classroom. You know, that's, that will kill the morale of a teacher. Because what it's telling the student is, it's telling them that they have more authority than a teacher does. You know, nothing's going to happen to me, I get in trouble, you know, I get, I'm going to get right back in, into the classroom. All right. Okay, all right, well, Sam, by just, we sent you another email, so just check that one and see if you can get that one. Okay, you should have a new one. We got Leroy on the line, we're trying to get his technical issue worked out. So if you guys can, please bear with us, we're going to get this worked out. Because we know everybody wants to hear from Leroy and see what direction he thinks that the school board and the schools and everything should be going in. So, so we will be talking about, we'll have, give him, okay, so he's back on. All right, let's see. All right, Leroy, can, let me see if we can hear you now.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
All right, that, that sounds great. All right, guys, so we have Leroy Renell.
Perfect monologue you had there, and then as soon as I hit unmute, I couldn't hear you anymore, and it went downhill fast from there. Thanks for having me, Tony, I appreciate it.
Oh, well, that's, that's no problem. And maybe what we just went through is, is going to be a testament of some of the challenges that you may face going in. You know, things are not going to be perfect. So what you do is you take a pause, try to maintain what you have, try to fix things, and let things progress for the better.
Yep, recalibrate.
Yeah, recalibrate. So I'm going to get right down to, you know, some, some questions that the, what, first of all, tell us about your platform and exactly why you decided to run for school board District One in Gwinnett County.
Yeah, sure. And so I like the monologue, similar backgrounds, being the first time talking to you, we, we have similar backgrounds and history. It was coaches and teachers and administrators that filled in the gap for me as well, that set me on the right path. And discipline is what, is what got me there. You know, when you compare discipline to motivation, without discipline, you're not going to be motivated every single day to get up in the morning. But with discipline, you definitely make sure you get up in the morning. Why am I running? Same as you, I started watching and seeing and noticing different things within the school board. It seemed to me that, that there were, and I'm not saying that there are agendas or narratives at the school board level, but what I can say is when you have a narrative or when you have an agenda, you tend to avoid facts or reality or data. And what the data was, was showing me, and what the facts show, is, is we're at our highest attrition rate ever. The Gwinnett County school system has never had a higher attrition rate within our teachers, higher than the nation, higher than the state.
So, so when you say attrition, for, for those of us that don't understand what that actually means, can you explain that to the War Room audience, what that, what that means?
Yeah, there's natural attrition when it comes to employees onboarding, hiring and leaving companies. There's an average of what's acceptable, what's normal. We are above that when you compare it to the state of Georgia, and we are above that when you compare it to the nation across all teachers. And it's the highest it's ever been in Gwinnett County. There's never been a higher attrition rate of 13%, 12%-ish than we are at Gwinnett County. In the month of May alone, we had 270-something teachers leave the school district. Thirty-something percent of them went to different school districts. So it wasn't that they were leaving teaching completely, it wasn't that they were moving away, they, they left to go to other school districts, other local school districts.
So wait, wait a minute, hold on. I, I'm not going to make this a Karen show, but when I, I spoke to Karen Watkins outside of District Two meeting, she was telling me, well, everybody, everybody wants to work, you know, come and teach in Gwinnett County. But what you're saying is, teachers are leaving at an alarming rate, basically.
I'm saying as of May of this year, 200-plus teachers left our school district, and 75 of them left to go teach at other school districts.
Wow.
That's it, that's it, that's a pretty large number.
Yeah.
Our graduation rate dropped last year. We, we wrote, we, we, we have parents and teachers who are not safe. We have, last year, our, our occurrences with weapons in our schools went up by 25%. Assault against our teachers, we had more than 2,000 incidents of assaults against our teachers last year. Nearly across every category, when it comes to violence or behavior or negative behavior, it increased in some cases exponentially last year. The morale, the morale of our teachers are low. Obviously, they're, they're leaving. And all the while, we have women saying, as an example, believes that if, if two kids get into a fight at a school, and, and those kids are friends, that, and those kids make up, and I'm not making this up, this is at a work session board meeting, that this woman made this suggestion or had this idea, those two kids get into a fight, they're friends, and they make up, that they shouldn't be suspended. And so when you, when you overlay that over all of our schools, and you overlay that methodology and that thought and that logic over your communities, how would you feel if you're living in your community and you had a 25% increase in weapons and crimes in your neighborhood for the next year? Or all crimes in your neighborhood exponentially increased the following year? So those are some of the reasons why I decided to run. And my platform is real simple. It's budget oversight. We have a $3 billion budget for Gwinnett County schools, larger than most cities. I think it's important to make sure we know, you know, where those funds are going. Logical decisions based on data and statistics and trends, not narratives or agendas, is important. You know, there's a, there's, there's something, there's a phenomenon called confirmation bias, where if you start believing something and, and data starts coming in, that because you are already thinking this one thing, you don't really pay attention to the statistics and the data and the information that's coming in, and you start ignoring that. And so making sure that you're aware that confirmation, confirmation bias is, is real and exists is important. Earning back the trust of our teachers and parents is important to me. Working with county resources, we don't do that enough, I think, from the school board level. And finally, safe schools. I mean, teachers can't teach and kids can't learn with the statistics that we just read out earlier, so.
Yeah. So would you say that the discipline problem is, where does that fall on your list of priority?
You mean as far as addressing the, the policy that was rolled out?
Yeah, yeah, well. Discipline overall, where does that fall? Because you, you have a list of things and areas that you're going to focus on, budget, a few other things. So where, where does discipline fall in the, the progress that it sounds like you're trying to promote with the things that you're interested in?
Right. I think we have to walk into them at the same time. I don't think I can, I don't think you can focus on, on one without paying equal attention to the other. I think they're all equally important. But to your earlier statement, the foundation of that has to be discipline. The foundation of that has to be accountability and, and resiliency. But also making sure individuals know that, that there are consequences to actions, and, and we're not just preparing kids for school, we're preparing, we're preparing kids, kids for life. And the decisions some of our kids are making today may be a slap on the wrist because they're juveniles, but those same actions, once they turn 17, have a, a larger consequence and a negative reaction to the community that we're trying to, to live in and grow. So I always say discipline is just as important as budget. It is just as important as, you know, trust and earning back, you know, respect from our teachers. Working with county resources is all equally important. But as a characteristic and as a, as a personality trait, having, having discipline as a core value is important.
Right. So, so what, what are you going to say, you know, if and when elected, when?
When.
These, yeah, okay. Well, he, he says underlying when, folks. He's, he's, he's going to take this thing. When you have organizations, special interest organizations like Gwinnett Stop that show up and say, hey, you know, you know, the, the people of color are marginalized, they're having a good time, and, you know, they, they need three or four chances of what have you, because you're just, what you're saying is promoting the school-to-prison pipeline or what have you. When you draw a line in the dirt and say, hey, if you're going to cross this line, or you're going to have this many repeat offenses, that you're, you're just feeding the, you know, to the narrative out here. So what, what, what say you? What, what would you say to those types of groups that are coming around, in my opinion, and trying to protect or remove consequences from kids and, and their actions?
Right, right. I would first, I would love to sit down and talk with them, speak with them, to understand, everyone has a story. You have a story, I have a story. We all see things through different lens. And I would appreciate and really enjoy a conversation with them. But I wouldn't, I've heard that phrase, prison-to-pipeline or school-to-pipeline, and I would say our schools are a pipeline of prosperity here in Gwinnett County. I, I wouldn't say they're a pipeline of prison. When you look at Gwinnett County today and our board of commissioners, they're diverse with minorities. Our district attorney, minority. Our vice chair for board commissioners, minority. Our sheriff, minority. When you look around, there is, there is individuals in successful positions of leadership within Gwinnett County. And I think it does our children a disservice to tell them and instill in them that they can't be successful because of their, their race and the cars are stacked against you. Now, that is not to ignore that we have had in, in the country issues that are increasingly better.
Yeah, but let me, yeah, hold on, let me pause you for a second. So isn't that what diversity, equity, inclusion, isn't that the underpinnings? Hey, we, we need to jump in right now and say, you know, well, you know, you're, you're getting on this group of this race more, and that doesn't look fair. So we're going to have to remove some of these consequences so that from the numbers standpoint, this can appear that we're going after bad behaviors in an equitable manner.
Right, it's the why.
What do you say that?
Yeah, it's, it's the why. So when you look at metrics and you look at data, you know, why is one demographic higher than the other? Is, is it underreported? Is it at a local level? Is it a cluster level? Is it, is it, is it a particular teacher? And we have the data to surgically address the issues without broad stroke implications that, that has impact on clusters and schools that's not dealing with the same problems that a particular cluster may be dealing with or a particular school may be dealing with. When you look at the violence and the reporting of incidents, it's, it's very clear where they're occurring. It's very clear what schools they're occurring at. It's very clear which teachers are stressed out and don't want to go to school to teach or don't feel safe to teach. And to, to ignore that does everyone a disservice. And so you have the data and you have the results of the data. Are we saying the teachers are, are, are not being equitable or not treating kids fairly? That's, that's one problem. Are we saying there's a particular school that has more of a socio, a socioeconomic or, or has lack of resources? That's a separate problem. And so understanding why those numbers are what they are is, is more important than questioning why one number is, is larger than the other.
Yeah. So race shouldn't, you know, you correct me if I'm wrong. Are you of the mindset that a race should have nothing to do with how many, how much in all of that? If, if, if a student offends or hits a teacher or gets in trouble, race shouldn't matter, correct? Shouldn't matter what their race is, right? I mean, it's recorded as a metric.
Right.
But what the school does.
A teacher, a teacher shouldn't factor in a kid's race when making a decision on, on discipline or what that kid did.
All right, okay.
I would, I would add to that, a teacher should, and let me correct myself, I'm not going to say what a teacher should do. Teachers are great, and I think they're doing, I know they're doing a great job. Part of that calculation, I, I am confident teachers are factoring in that the personal relationship they have with that kid, the resources they know that kid has or doesn't have. All of those factors at a local teacher level, I am confident our teachers are using to make the decisions to institute or attempt to institute discipline. But when we hamper them or roll out policies without training or teaching or lack of resources, the numbers show that we, we put them in a position where they can't win, where they can't teach.
Okay. Well, I, I've been doing some surveys just throughout the county. And specifically, I've spoke to 100% people of the minority community. And overwhelmingly, this is, this is the, the take, the leniency. They see it in the messaging, and quite frankly, they're comparing it to, you know, we all know the story, when we grew up, what was, what was, what was, was school like? You know, this is not complicated situation. What, what kids are smart enough to know is, they'll try and get away with whatever we allow them. And they know about all the conversations that are being had. They listen at the news, they hear all the rhetoric flying around, you know, black people are marginalized, this group is this, that group is that. And we, we all, we have kids, it's obvious. If, if somebody's listening to this podcast or what have you, is, they're probably 98% have children or grandchildren. And how many times does one kid try to pit one parent against the other parent? They do it all the time. And this is, this is no different. And, you know, I played that, that the code open today to show that if we don't have people in place that are serious about putting down the rules and sticking to them and not having audible, once this line get crossed, another play gets called. Once this line get crossed, another play get called. This kid ends up in here and they say, well, you know, you know, I'm really thinking that we've got to have some hard lines. And it's just, it's, it's just the, the point we at right now. You know, I'm, I'm talking to guys throughout the community, and I am telling you, here's what they're saying. They're saying they don't want Gwinnett County, it's all black people, you know, and I don't care about race, I got, you know, people that know me know I deal with, I have friends everywhere, all kinds of different backgrounds, the black guys. This is what they're saying. And you'll, the, the community is about to start hearing from them bigly. They're saying that they don't want Gwinnett County to turn into the hood. Well, how's that going to happen? Well, you look at your schools, because this is, these are, the, the kids are who we're cultivating to go out here and into society. So when these police interdict, encounters happen, you know, where did that behavior come from? You know, we have three levels and three opportunities to cultivate our children. That's number one is at home, we, we all know that. Number two is going to be our school system, that's where we go, education. The third interaction is with the police. You know, and we're seeing a lot of kids that don't have, I'm seeing the kids, I'm hearing from teachers, I see children at the bus stop high. I was a part of the hip-hop culture. I can send you the music and links and stuff, this is stuff I'm not proud of because I know what it does to the hearts and minds of our youth. But I'm seeing these kids and these teachers, and but they telling me they, the children come in the school smelling like weed. So, you know, we not going to roll out and have the kids take a urine test or whatever the case may be, but we have to, have to understand that we're going to have to make some hard lines. It would behoove the board to make some hard line, and this don't mean these are harsh punishments, it's just you got to make some hard lines.
Yeah, and so about, teachers want to teach. Teachers don't want to deal with the discipline issues, they don't want to deal with, with that, teachers want to teach, they, they're in the profession because they, they love to teach. And a policy is not going to address the, the population of kids that need resources that, that the school can't provide, and there's a litany of them, mental health resources, single-parent homes, there's, there's tons of, there's tons of challenges within each and every household. All 188,000 kids have all unique stories and unique situations that a policy can't address. Positive, I mean, when you're, when you're telling a kid that you can't succeed because of a certain, because you're a certain race, let's just use that for an example, and, and that kid doesn't have positive role models in our life to tell them, no, that's not true, that, well, we're setting that kid up for failure. That, well, we're setting that kid up for failure. And so there's one thing that I do know for sure is that undisciplined kids will grow up to be undisciplined adults. And so that's one thing that you mentioned earlier that is true. But making sure we partner with organizations that, that show how, how prosperous Gwinnett County is and how it will position to continue to trend that way. And, and show them how they can be a part of that success and prosperity is where we need to be, uh, working with our county resources and Parks and Rec and youth athletic associations and Sheriff's Office, local law enforcement. They all wanna be a part of that because we all live here together. And so having a policy is good and great and it gives guidelines for us to try and respond to incidents and occurrences in a unified systematic position. But at the local level of that school, that teacher, that resident, that kid, we have to figure out what resources they need to correct the behavior. Because that one kid that's getting into a fight at school is interrupting 20 other kids who's there to learn and teach, who's there to learn from a teacher. And so we have to make sure, using, you know, phrases that we've heard in the past, each and every kid has an opportunity to learn and be safe and go into school. And each and every teacher has the resources that they need. And we meet our teachers where they are with the resources that they need to be safe and secure in teaching our schools.
Right. So is, is not the, um, the school itself is a resource? Can, can we agree that policy is idea based? And what undergirds the policy is the rules that you outline within the policy? So when, so when that kid gets to school, you may, this, this, the policy may be the resource for that particular kid. Let's give you for an example. You have, you, uh, sports guy, right? So which, which sport was you, did you play?
Did I play?
Or did you coach?
Basketball, track.
Football, okay. So you're all around sports guy. So when, when we recruit guys, guys come in with different, from different backgrounds, different homes, different experiences. They bring all of these things to the table, right?
Right.
So the, the game of football has rules that are set. Those rules are not changing. When you do, when you jump offsides, you're gonna get a five yard penalty. You may get 10 or 15 depending on if it's just an encroachment or how hard. And they're gonna say offsides, number so and so for the green team. Then I'm gonna ask, hey, you know, did this kid?
Did you have a bad night last night?
This is, this, this is the bottom line here. The rules and the law has to be the standard. And this is the same thing that's going on in policing. We had the same conversation with the sheriff the other day. The, the standards have, have been lowered. Yes, we wanna provide resources. We wanna have a conversation with that kid before and after they come off the field. When you, you want to, when you come to school, you on the field. When you walk in that classroom, when you walk on county property, you are on the field. The rules apply. When you jump offsides, you break your knee or whatever the case may be. Or you get in here, oh yeah, we gonna deal with you, but the rule is gonna apply. You gonna get 25 yards. You gonna get, you know, so and so half the distance from the, you gonna get all of that.
Right.
And then when you get in the coach's office, we gonna have a conversation. Hey, what went on out there? And, and, and what's so important is these pre and post-game speeches. You know why? Because you can't have that conversation on the field. What say you?
Yeah. Yeah, it's too late to have it. Once you get there, you gotta train and prepare, you know, in the home and, and set those expectations for game time slash school, school time. And enforce those rules equally across all of our districts. All of our teachers, all of our students, all of our parents should have the same level of expectation. And, and making sure we hold ourselves accountable for, for making sure we are following the rules. We being.
Absolutely, yeah.
In the school system. And so we can, you, you and I both know, you know, every official isn't perfect. Every official can use some additional, you know, training or counseling or coaching here and there and, and may have some opportunities for growth and improvement. And, but I think we can, we can figure out, just how you can, those referees, we can figure out where those opportunities exist in our schools and address it locally within that particular environment. The administrators know their schools better than anyone else. They know the parents, they know the kids, they know the teachers, they know the counselors. And so relying upon them to make decisions for their school that's more appropriate for that, most appropriate for that kid in that situation is where we need to be versus looking at a number and saying that number looks too high.
Absolutely. So the, the weight room for the game for school is gonna be the work and the pick and shovel work at home with the parents. So since we're on the subject of parents, what, what do you, what message do you have? Or what do you say to parents who are, let's, let's be honest here. If there's a kid that's coming to school and let's say they're in, whatever, great. Parents, we know our children. I know my kids. So when they come to school and they're a problem for the teacher, quite frankly, for the board and the whole system, the parent knows that already. They already know it. So what, what, I know you, we all consider this advice, but what kind of feedback would you have for a parent that basically has a problem child? I mean, we, they're, they're out here. That's just, that's just the truth.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, I, I have dealt, I've been in law enforcement for 20 something plus years and there's always the not my kid parent that you have to have conversations with. But I think that starts with relationships. I think that starts with that parent trusting that the school system and the teachers and the, and the folks that are around their kid have no interest in not telling her the truth. So I think there's a distrust issue that we have to address by having conversations and building relationships between our parents and our, and our, and our kids. And so once that relationship is there, if, if, if I have a teacher contact me and I trust that teacher, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna question if the teacher's telling the truth or if the students, my, my kids telling the truth. And so making sure we have that relationship between the parents and the teachers, but that means parents have to be involved. And that can be tough, just keeping it real and being, you know, in reality. Single parent homes where they're working two, three jobs and, and have multiple kids in different schools and homework. And that can be tough for a parent to try and build a good, trustful relationship with a teacher. But you have to have some type of threading between the teacher and the parent so that there is an element of trust and, and conversation to, when you get that text from that teacher or you get that email from that teacher, that you, that you believe that they're not just picking on your kid or they're not singling your kid out. And I've heard stories where, where parents really think that, that they think that, that their kid is being singled out for a particular reason. And so it doesn't matter at that point what the conversation is, if that trust between those two parties aren't there. So making sure, answer your question, making sure that trust is there and, and more conversations, more, more involvement between those two groups, parents and teachers would help. But then I also think there has to be ancillary support, additional support from our churches, faith leadership, neighbors, mentors in the neighborhood. They all know that kid as well. And so it's not a single layer of support that we should rely upon to raise our kids in our communities. I know kids in my community. I know who they are. I know how they react. And I don't treat them all the same because they all have different levels of capabilities. But they're all treated fairly and they're, and they're all treated equally. It does not mean they're all gonna have the same outcome.
Right. So the fairness and inequality is gonna lie within the rules or like the grading structure and the parameters that are set by the school board association, which is you're, you're basically the referee at that point. You, you have, you make a call or you don't make a call. Now, we have kids.
The school board is more of the, the commissioners, if you're comparing the analogy.
Okay.
And the referees would be the teachers and the administrator.
Okay.
If you're comparing the analogy.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thanks, thanks for, for, for that correction. But, but basically we have to have that set of rules and standards for equal for everyone.
Yep.
And we have to make a call equal on everyone. And we have to give the same amount of, of, of penalty depending on what the offense was. And this is, has nothing to do with race. This has nothing to do with kind of morning you had, what kind of mama and papa you had. This is just only, should serve as an indication to the parent or to the family or the community of what needs to be worked on. It's just like when you go in that coaches meeting afterwards, it's like, we gonna watch film. Okay, well, you jumped offsides right here. Hey, what, then, then that happens. But we lost some points on the board in the middle of all that, you know, we had to deal with that decision. It's like, we, we trying to get an instant replay. This is what I'm hearing, what I'm gathering. We trying to get an instant replay and get this call, get the flag waved off.
Right.
That's not gonna, sometimes we need them flags to be pulled.
And there, and there is an instant replay feature where if you make a mistake, you can, you can go back and fix it. And so to that, using that same analogy and scenario, there is, is important to ask the right questions. I'm a data guy. I'm a very data driven guy. I'm in cybersecurity and I don't have a lot of room for error when it comes to making decisions and certain things. And so making sure you have enough data and a lot of data coming in so you can make a correct decision is, is a good strategic decision is important. And so part of researching, you know, the history of Gwinnett County schools, I went to the Board of Education website and pulled up some of the numbers. And there was, there are some interesting things in there from 2013, 2015 that would, should have allowed me back then to ask the question of why? Why does this number mean this? Why does this number mean that? I, I can't draw a conclusion based on what I see in numbers to, to say, you know, this must mean a particular group of kids is getting treated differently. You can't draw that conclusion from the numbers. You have to ask the right questions and do the research and have the conversations with those schools to understand what's going on.
Right. Okay. All right. So let, let me go to the, and see if we can get some questions answered that's been going off in the, in the chat room. Let's see. Okay, the, the Gwinnett County Commission, Planning Commission, and this is from a, a parent, ignores the GPS planning folks. Our schools are overcrowded. Teachers should not be in trailers, trailers. The teacher slash student ratio is too high. We need schools, more schools if we are to keep building. What is your input? You know, what would you have to say to the commission or what have you? Just kinda believe this is what they're asking.
Yeah, yeah. There are, I leave my neighborhood and drive around running errands in D'Qula all the time. And every corner, there is a new development of, looks like hundreds of homes in these developments and businesses and commercial property. And we have Rowan popping up over here, uh, coming up soon off the 316 corridor. Gwinnett is a, is a booming county still, is a growing county. It is one of the most diverse counties, I think, and they say in the country. And so it is important that other county resources are paying attention to the growth that specific areas are experiencing to make sure we have the infrastructure in place to support the growth. What you don't want is a bunch of, and I'm speaking out of my lane as far as, you know, school board. But what you don't want is traffic on roads, teachers and kids in trailers. They can't teach in those types of environments as well. And so making sure we are aware and understand that there is a plan in place to address the spacing issue associated with our schools. I think last I heard is it takes two, three, four years for a school to go from, from cradle to being built. And so making sure our government officials in their respective lanes are planning for that development, growth that we're experiencing and not waiting until we're in 20 trailers outside is important.
Yeah. It appears to me that, I hadn't heard anything about a significant amount of schools getting ready to be built, but I see cranes everywhere I go.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about new schools. I think there was maybe something in Archer District, maybe a middle school supposedly, you know, getting, being built. But to answer the, the person's question, making sure our Gwinnett County departments who are responsible, responsible for that infrastructure and, and, and growth, you know, making sure we're on the same page is where I would be on that. I, I definitely agree that kids in trailers and the student to kid ratio is not where we wanna be. You know, we having problems with vacancies, so that doesn't help. That makes that number go down lower and impacting morale doesn't help. You know, we wanna keep teachers here, not give them reasons to leave. And so my brother and I moved to Gwinnett County years ago and it was literally because of the schools. I've had family and friends and neighbors move from Gwinnett County recently because of the schools. And so we have to fix these all simultaneously so that we can keep Gwinnett County as one of the leading counties in Georgia. And it starts with the school system. No one wants to come move, a business can't recruit employees to a school system that's in the news every month for the wrong reasons.
Yeah. And then, and then, yeah, and not for, in the news for excellence. And this is the main reason. For those who just tuning in, we're doing an interview with Leroy Renell. He's running for school board, District One. Make sure you like, share and subscribe to the podcast and to the channel. Leroy, this is the main reason why we, we set our focus on those five areas. The district attorney, sheriff's office, city council, planning commission and the school board. Now, there are many more and those don't come in any particular order. But I would say that our children, their safety and, and their education should always, should always be a priority to all of us because these are the seeds of tomorrow. So let me ask you, moving on, let me ask you another question. Critical race theory. Okay, this, this, it's, it claims its system in America is racist. Whites are inherently racist. Everyone being, everyone born that are not white are victims of racism. And no matter what the decisions are made, blacks are marginalized and oppressed due to the racist social construct. What, what are your thoughts on critical race theory? Not from the aspect of, you know, because we have people that allude to the fact and say, well, you know, since there's been some history blighted out. No. All history needs to be taught in its entirety. What are your thoughts on this whole idea that whites are inherently racist? And because I'm a black man, I'm oppressed. I've had these arguments with people that knew me growing up that I went to school with. Who saw my life from beginning until now. They're telling me I'm oppressed. What are, what are your thoughts?
Right. I would say life as a black person in 2023 and life as a black person in 1960, are two vastly different individuals. With that being said, to your original question about CRT, it is important that we, we don't repeat history. It's important that we acknowledge history. It's important that we don't attempt to erase or not acknowledge some of the challenges we've had in America. I have stories from relatives, my dad, stories from him of being oppressed and, and being abused in some areas because of his skin color. And so to, to not acknowledge that and to not appreciate that, that, that was part, that was part of our history, I don't, I think that would be ignorant to do that. But to say the opportunities we have today as a minority is the same as how it was in 1960 and, and we're still just as oppressed and don't have the opportunities, don't have the same resources as they did almost 80 years ago. I don't, I don't think that's an accurate description of where we are today as a race. That's how I respond to that.
So, so would you, do you believe that is irresponsible or would be potentially irresponsible for any education system to speak that kind of rhetoric? And the craft policies based that's, that are anti what you, the last statement that you said? I mean, what, what, what does that let the, these kids, you know? I mean, what, what, what does that let the, these kids, you know? I I, I went to college, I had roommates and um, you know, you see what different people do and all of that, how they spend their time. And even some adults nowadays. So what, what kind of message would that be sending to, to them? To like, you know, you, you oppressed, um, you know, we gotta put D E I in because we need to make sure that no, and it's, and the, the, all the teachers, or most of the people in the, in the school, eighty percent black that's running the thing. But we need to make sure that, you know, D E I is, 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 what are, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's going back to the numbers game. And you can't, you can't play the numbers game. When I look at pictures of the civil rights movement, I see just as many white people standing alongside black people for the right thing. Um, so I I don't, you can't play the numbers game and just draw a conclusion based on um, based on numbers. I I think, I think it is important that, that we, that we do what you and I are doing, we have the conversation. And I think that's a lot of the, the angst that we have when we get into buckets of, of political labels that, you know, you tend to not have a conversation with someone who doesn't think like you and doesn't have the background in history as you do. Um, and so making sure you, you, we have conversations with folks who think differently than we think is, is important. Um, but um, it sends the wrong message. And I'll go back, and I said this earlier. It, it, it sends the wrong message to a kid to tell them you are more than likely not gonna succeed because you're black and oppressed. I I I just think that's, that's categorically incorrect and, and should not be a message you teach to a kid.
So what should, so what should we be telling kids nowadays? Well, what should be, we be telling them um, instead of tell, saying that to them? What, what would you say to a kid, maybe a kid that's struggling or maybe a kid that's not struggling? What would your message be to kids?
So look at your story, your story, my story. Telling, telling kids who may not have the resources, who may not have, have the family, may not have the Joneses, White Pickett fence. Who may not, who may have um, to share a bedroom with three, four kids or parents not involved in their extracurricular activities or, or dads always working, you know? I would tell those kids that you, you can make it, you, you can do it. Look, look around you. Look at your leadership around you. Look at the resources, and I'm, and I'm speaking specifically to Gwinnett County kids. Look at the resources you have here in Gwinnett County compared to other counties. Look, look at the support, look at all of, all of these things that other kids don't have that you have here in Gwinnett County. But we have to show that up with individuals like myself and 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 you and other individuals. We, we, we have to get that message to them because I, there are folks that I know who live in South Gwinnett and they've never left their neighborhood. And so they don't know what's out there. They don't know that there are individuals um, who are labeled as um, a marginalized group but leading the county. And and so those two things don't square. You, you can't tell me you're marginalized, uh, you don't have a chance, uh, you probably not gonna succeed. Um, and then look at the representation across all of our county governments. Those two narratives, those two messages, they don't square. They don't, they don't jive. So something's not right whenever you try and communicate that. And so having that real conversation and just get away from that um, and and start setting our kids up for success.
Alright, fair enough. So um, let's, let's move on. Let, let me see if we can pull another question off of um, our chat over here. Oh, ano- another question was, I believe it was, it's been millions spent on uh, stadiums for high schools and um, not much for um, middle schools. And I know you're a budget guy or whatever. I guess what, what would, what would you do? Uh, what, what would your advice be or lead to be to? I get, get more funding to maybe sports areas um, in middle school? Um, what, what, what would your take be on that?
You said.
Yeah, like football stadiums and things like that, that was the question.
Uh, Gwinnett County is interesting in that the park systems are ran by our youth athletic associations. And so our youth athletic associations go from, uh, depending on the sport, anywhere from five, six years to uh, seventh, eighth grade for most sports. And so that middle school sports infra- uh, middle school sports ecosystem is really encapsulated in the youth athletic association for that particular community. Um, for, for most sports. There are some middle school sports like basketball um, that exists for seventh, eighth grade. Um, but Gwinnett County is one of few counties in, in the nation, from what I, from what I recall, that has that construct of the, that the park system, the recreational activities aren't managed by Gwinnett County Parks, they're managed in partnership with the Youth Athletic Association. Um, I would certainly hear an opportunity to bring more sports to middle schools. Um, more studies have shown and researchers have shown, a, a kid busy in extra, look at your story, your, your sports story. Uh, I know for me personally, without sports, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. And so um, having more opportunities uh, in, in schools at middle school level, I think is a great idea. Uh, it's just making sure it's implemented and executed and, and ran effectively uh, would be what I wanna, you know, entertain. But I, I don't um, see any reason why we can't look at bringing additional sports into middle school. But the youth athletic associations today, I know, are where middle school sports generally reliable and generally lies.
Alright, so uh, would you favor increasing or reducing school safety uh, resource officers to challenge the increase of violence in our schools? What is your opinion on H B two thirty-three, the school choice bill? Um, are you in favor or against having families in underperforming school have a choice where to send their kids? And I, this is, no, it's a cluster of questions, so you can ask them whatever you want. What is your opinion on the increase of, of students using e-cigarettes in school? I mean, should this even be allowed?
E-cigarettes? I think there's a policy that already exists for e-cigarettes. I don't think cigarettes or smoking of anything, but, but teachers or students should be allowed in, in schools. I, I don't think that's um, I just don't think that's an appropriate place. Um, you mentioned the, uh, the H R, that's a school choice.
Yeah, uh-huh, about coo- uh, pe- uh, kids that have, uh, parent, families that have kids in underperforming schools or what have you.
Yeah, that's a complicated dynamic. Uh, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't read much about that school choice initiative. I know there's eight or nine states that's recent, that, that have a history of allowing that. And uh, there was some recent one that was just added as allowing school choice. I forgot which state it was. I, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the, the consequences of saying yes, we would allow that to that question. I don't know what collateral impact or, or damage that would put on the entire district by saying yes to that question. However, it does not mean that we should ignore underperforming schools and the parents who want to give their kids opportunities to succeed. Um, but their kids can't because of the lack of discipline that are existing inside of schools. We can't, if we're gonna say each and every kid, then we have to address the kid that wants to learn, that wants to go to school in a safe environment, that wants to learn from their teacher, uh, we have to address those kids as well. And so um, I don't know enough about the school choice um, option to say yes or no to it. Um, but every home, every parent and every kid deserves an opportunity to learn in a Gwinnett County school.
Alright, well, we've, we know some people that are helping lead the charge for that. So um, would you be open to uh, listening to, having them send you some information on their input and the way they can kind of um, you know, get you the information on what you need. Okay, alright, that sounds good.
I enjoy talking with everyone. Um, everyone, like I said earlier, everyone has a story. I, I, I know what I know, but I also know what I don't know. And I am looking to fill that void of what I don't know. And the more knowledge I have, uh, knowledge is power. Uh, the more knowledge I have gives me the data I need to make some good strategic decisions.
Got it. So they wanted to make sure that uh, there was a question about the school resource officers. Um, I think they have like two officers for thirty-two hundred kids. That's
Yeah.
That's a pretty big uh, pretty big charge. And I, and you know, then, in the, on the person's behalf to ask the question out of the chat. Of course, we don't want the schools to turn into looking like a um, a uh, a, a, a jail communion or anything. But the reality is the rise of violence and um, you know, that's probably why I would say they asked the question.
Right, that's fine. I can tell you, I think I saw on one of your, when I was doing my own research of your, of your podcast. Um, I think I saw, I forgot which group it was, was asking to pull all resource officers out of schools. I don't remember.
Uh, I think that was, that might have been, don't quote me on this, I believe it was Gwinnett Stop.
Okay, um, I don't remember which one it was. I, I can tell you, I am not for that. Uh, that, that, that does not, that does not make sense to me. Um, uh, but conversely, I don't know if doubling resource officers in every school makes sense to me either. Uh, it goes back to common sense and logical decision-making. If I have a school that has no disciplinary issues and I have a school that has weapons, robberies, attacks on teachers, I'm probably gonna concentrate on that second school before I concentrate on that first school. So you can have a number of resources and not say each school gets two. Maybe one school gets four and those other two, three schools that have no problems. You know, there's some rotating or a floater or something like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming.
That was just an example. I wasn't saying.
Based on the need, yeah. Based on the need, you might have a school that need four, you know, it might need five. But we don't, of course, we don't wanna see five at a school that doesn't have that many.
I'm, I'm sure our SROs have intelligence and information about certain things that may be spinning up because of local beef between folks. And so you may have to aggregate those numbers with additional officers at a, at a particular time. But I do see our SROs as a resource. Um, and, and, and not a resource in the, in the military militant uh, component. Um, our resource officers are, are normally uh, previous officers in area departments, um, and they are experienced officers. Um, I, I know a good bit of them and I appreciate and enjoy everything they do for our kids. We have to make sure we, we balance their role and not conflate it with the role of a teacher, admin or staff. Um, they're the Air Force particular resource and, and we can't, uh, we can't use them as an administrative uh, resource. Um, this is twenty twenty-three and it's where we are. I remember Columbine was a game changer. Uh, the Columbines in Colorado shooting, that changed everything when it came to schools. And so I, I don't see removing SROs out as an, as an option. I, I don't know if that was the question they were asking or not, but um.
Yeah, I think she was mostly focused on getting more based on the need, you know, so if you got a, a school like South, there's no secret. South Gwinnett, they have a lot of issues uh, or whatever case. Oh, since we're on the subject, um, the drug use based on the report um, is pretty high. What, what are your thoughts on to, it's, it's only one way that you can keep drugs out. Um, what do you think about, um, and this might be a controversial question. But it's obvious that these kids are either smoking or bringing these drugs to school and doing drugs right there on campus. What is the idea on random checks or random, you know? They, they, I, I done seen all, all kinds of different things growing up through, in, in the school system. Because this, this issue is, is running rampant. And um, and, and unless the, the, you gotta be believable. It's just like being a father in a house. If, if, if dad's not believable, then the kid's just gonna run, you know, and this is no disrespect to women. Women play a nurturing role and they, yes, they get on the kids and they just, when they do different stuff. But if dad is not believable, and you know, that presence in that school, and I'm not saying they need to be some type of military state because I'm, I'm anti having too much government in anything, period. But we have a problem. We have an issue. We have a drug problem. We have a gun problem in these schools. And I can tell you what, these K nine units exist for a reason. They can smell drugs and they can smell gunpowder. So is it worth the safety or what have you? These kids are traumatized by seeing fights and stuff every day. So I'm not gonna sit on this podcast and say, you know, I think the drugs is, I mean, having a cop come in here every now and then or if a dog walks through the hall and he say, hey, it's, it's drugs in this classroom on the left, I need to go in here. That shouldn't be a problem.
Right.
It should, it shouldn't be a, but what are your thoughts? That's, that's my thought.
Well, it's a, it, it becomes a problem when we teach our kids to fear law enforcement. It, it becomes a problem when we teach our kids that police officers are, are the bad guy. Or police officers are the ones that, you know, you don't go to whenever you have a problem. And so that, when, when you, when you instill that dynamic and you instill that belief system into a kid, then fear is what they will feel when they see a police officer, cause that's what they've been taught. Um, and, and, and you, and you spoke of, you know, the, the dynamic of, of dads and moms and stuff. And the reality of it is, we have a lot of single moms that, that, that are doing dual roles. They have to be mom, the nurturing, and they have to be dad, the disciplinarian. And that's tough, that's tough to do. Um, which is why we need the support of, of the community and, and other mentors and, and, and role models to help steer that kid um, from doing those, committing those negative behaviors. But to your, to your original question, uh, drugs went up ten, twelve percent in our district last year. We have a policy, I don't know word for word what that policy is, but um, in part, I'm assuming it is something to the effect of you can't do drugs at school. Something, I'm sure there's worded more eloquently than that, but don't bring your drugs to school. Um, and so going back to your original statement earlier is, we have rules. The rule says, don't bring drugs to school, and you bring drugs to school, there's a consequence. And understanding why that kid chose to bring drugs to school or how that kid's even getting drugs, those are questions we still have to address and answer with our counselors and, and, and S E L folks and, and, and that ecosystem of support. Um, that a policy isn't gonna help that kid at that point. Th- this kid needs some type of uh, specific uh, care and feeding um, to figure out what's going on in that kid's life where they feel like they need drugs, A, and then B, that it's okay to bring it to school. Like, like those are, those are two things that i- it didn't happen when I was going to school. Um, it wasn't even a thought. Uh, tho- those were things you knew that if you, you, you brought that to school, you were probably not gonna be in school anymore that year, uh, whether it was a day or two.
Right, so, but my, my, my main question was, the, we know that the drugs are up because that's what the, that's what the numbers say.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I got you.
So we know, we know that those up. This is controversial question, but we don't hear the, the, to ask the hard questions. If it meant, if it meant a child overdosing on fentanyl. If it meant a, a child walking around high on marijuana, cause they get paranoid. People get paranoid when they smoke weed. They try to make like, oh, nothing's wrong with smoking weed, you know? You can only, you know, you can, you only gonna get a, you only gonna get a big appetite. No, people get paranoid and trip out. What if there's a beef between this one guy, whatever, and this other student? And he smokes some weed, have a trip or whatever, and he got a gun. We, we just, this, this is the starting point of a road that we don't know where it's gonna end up. So the way we stop this is to start catching these guys at school with the weed or whatever they got or whatever illegal drug or alcohol, e-cigarettes and all of this. How you do that? Okay, you're not gonna just strip a, a, a kid down and be like, yeah, you, you look like you got some drugs. That's why you use your other tools and your resources. And what's that? It's for K nine unit. This is me saying this, ain't Leroy saying it. Now, so don't, don't run around the pe- the, the people that's watching the show, don't run around and say Leroy said, hey, he, he ready to bring the dogs in. But the question is, are we willing to use every tool in a toolbox to make sure that these kids are safe? Because we gotta, we, it, it's our job to think downrange. We do, we're the administration, the coaches, the leadership, the commission, as like you say, we gotta think downrange. We just can't think of, hey, this is just a little weed charge. You smell like a little weed or whatever. He walked in or whatever the case may be or whatever. We can, we can't think like that. We gotta find this stuff and get rid of it, is what we need to do.
Right, I, I am, I am not against proactively um, identifying uh, schools that have issues with drugs and relying upon our SROs or local law enforcement to make the appropriate decisions to address that issue. to make the appropriate decisions to address that issue, um, to solve the problem. If that means, uh, uh, you know, a, uh, they have intelligence of two pounds of marijuana in the locker and they wanna bring, they wanna do whatever it is they need to do to, to take care of that, then yes, I would, I would support that. Would, to your earlier point, would I support strip searches for kids at school?
Oh, no. No, I didn't ask that question. I just to make, to maybe clear. We did not ask the question. We don't, the, the strips, all that's not necessary. That's why we have different resources, like a K-9 or whatever, or if somebody saw something, there was enough problem to call it.
So to answer your question, I would rely, my, my, I would rely upon our chief of SROs who, who, who we've put there for that reason, to not just address the drug problem, but rely upon him and his department and his officers, him or her, to make the appropriate decisions to keep the drugs out, to keep our kids safe, to keep our kids, to your safe, uh, across the board.
Right.
And, and so I don't, I don't.
So let me ask, let me ask you this in, in your capacity after like when you win or whatever. So.
Right.
The numbers are up, right? We both, we, we, we both know that the nu- the numbers are up as far as the drug use. So that's a fact and there's no getting out of that. So there's no other movement. I'm not saying that nothing at all is going on. But to, to aggressively, because this is progressing in another di- uh, uh, different direction.
It's trending up very fast, yeah.
It, it's trending up. So what's gonna happen when that person that's appointed that chief, everybody waiting on him to make some type of decision? Maybe that decision is hard. We don't know what that decision is. But they're just kinda sitting, oh, you know, um, you know, that whole, we getting on who, whatever group of kids or this group again, then it go back to all that and, uh, over again, and this is playing through because it's, it's political pressure. The problem with what we got going on in Gwinnett is we have allowed politics to enter into a, 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 a space where it does not belong. But guess, we gotta deal with it. And that's, that's just the bottom line. You have a group of people that, in my opinion, want law and order, and you have another group that wanna be lenient. It'll be great if, if we could just kinda be like, you know, we woke up, it's a great day today. Ain't nothing to do. The police don't need to go after this person. That, that'll be excellent. I wouldn't have a problem with that because I want peace and, and safe communities and kids to have an opportunity to go, go to school and get a good education, and I want teachers to support. I want that white picket fence that you named out. I want all of that, but that's just not the time that, that we living in. And unless we send a strong statement to these people that are destroying, destroying these schools, and I call them criminals, if you participating in criminal activity, it don't matter if you're a student, you label yourself as a criminal at that point, then you're opposition. And I'm saying, it is what it is. You have an opportunity, the sword work two ways. It works two ways. You can be on the end with the handle, you know, where it protects you. It's just like a shield at that point. You don't have to strike somebody with it. Or you can be on the other end. And people are making the decision to say, you know, well, no, if that's the decision you made, you're gonna have to deal with it. We'll talk to you when we get off the field though. But we gotta pull the flag on you right now. What say you?
Yeah, I, I would say I'm on the flag pulling side. Rules wi- without consequences or enforcement are just words on paper and, and they don't mean anything. And the, the more, and we experience this as parents, the more rope you give someone, the more they're gonna take. And so, um, I, I am on the side of what, what the policy is and what the rules are. Um, using the appropriate resources to address that particular problem. If it's a school addressing AWOL and she's empowered to do that, we need to support her in doing that. If it's an administrator, uh, doing what's right for her school, his or her school, to remove a kid from, uh, a learning environment to that other kids can learn and, and give that kid that they're moving from the school, the resources they need to, to come back into school in appropriate time, I support that. If it means referring kids to an SRO, I support that. Whatever guidelines and, and rules we have in place, um, we have to make sure our, our, our resources are empowered to use, to use them. All the while, like we said earlier, by holding ourselves accountable, all the while by making sure we're doing it, you know, equally and fairly, not assuring, not ensuring equality of outcome, but making sure that we're following our own rules in application of, uh, you know, discipline. I, I, I support that. And, and I think our teachers were doing that and, and would love to continue doing that because at the end of the day, they want to teach. They don't wanna referee fights. They don't wanna get attacked. Uh, they don't wanna get marginalized by parents. Um, they wanna teach. And so, uh, I, I think we, we have to make, I know, we have to make sure our teachers know that they're empowered, that they have the resources and support. And, and when and if there are issues of disproportionate, um, or the appearance of disproportionate numbers, you gotta look at that. You can't, you can't ignore the problems we're facing today and, and you can't ignore improper applications of it as well because that starts to, uh, institute, uh, distrust between parents and teachers and, and we already know how that ends. And so that's how we address it. Um, we, we, we have to make sure we have the right policy. We have to make sure we have the right resources. Let's make sure we have the right, uh, application of it and make sure it's done, um, consistently.
All right. So, um, I have another question. I wanna play you another, uh, code open and thi- this, this one might be, uh, quite, quite controversial, but I just think it's something that we need to, uh, take a look at because it's, uh, something that happens. So if you, um, take a mute and then we'll, um, we'll bring you back in or what have you. Let me see if I can get this set up real quick and, uh, we'll make it, try to make it quick as we can for the, uh, for the audience. All right. All right, so here we go.
Die on that hill of yours of righteousness and moral majority, then you go right ahead. I dare you to try and stop me from going into a women's bathroom. It will be the last mistake you ever make. I dare you to try and stop a transgender woman in my presence from using the bathroom. It will be the last mistake you ever make. This is a call to action and a call to arms to everybody within the United States that are scared, worried, have children that are transgender, lesbian, bi, or gay. This is a call to action. You need to warm up, plain and simple. Go out, buy a gun, learn how to use it efficiently, through and through. Because.
We'll probably make this guy the FBI director.
Time to act as soon as. You need to protect yourself and you need to protect your fellow transgender brothers and sisters and they's and them's. You need to protect the rest of us in the LGB community, as I am going to do myself. Because there are lots of people like me who are not afraid to die. I love my girlfriends to death, but I would rather die for them to secure their safety, freedom, and future than to live and not have anything done.
Robbie, the Nashville school attack leaving scenes of heartache for the victims and thankfulness by the survivors. Fourteen minutes of terror for 200 students and dozens of covenant teachers and school administrators. Police just now identifying the shooter as Audrey Elizabeth Hale, a 28-year-old from Nashville and a former student. Nashville Metro Police on the scene quickly rushing the shooter on the second floor of the school. But with two AR-style weapons and a handgun, there was already damage done. Three adults, two nine-year-olds, and one about to turn nine had been shot dead. As the police work was underway, so too was the prayer work at this Christian elementary school invaded by Hale in a targeted attack, according to investigators. As school families and a city there mourn, authorities right now at the shooter's residence in Nashville. They found maps and surveillance evidence. The result playing out today at 10:30 AM.
We know and believe that entry was gained through shooting through one of the doors, uh, is how they actually, uh, got, uh, into the school.
I am overwhelmed at the thought of the loss of these families, of the future lost by these children and their families. And the leading cause of kids get death now is guns and gunfire. And that is unacceptable.
We just now have the first picture of one of those killed. Sixty-year-old Catherine Coontz led the covenant school. A letter from Coontz on the school's website citing the school's unique challenge to educate 21st century children in a way that prepares them to impact their culture and thing in accordance with timeless truth, she wrote, helping children become who God intends them to be.
Okay, all right. You, you say you can't hear me, Leroy?
I can hear you now. I didn't, whatever you were playing or showing, I couldn't hear any of that.
Okay, and then, okay, so, but let, let me just brief the, to get you what it, what it was. Uh, we won't go through it again. But basically, um, it showed this, um, this guy claiming to be, he was a biological male, claiming to be a woman, had his hair, calling a call to arms, um, and basically telling, uh, trans people to, um, take up arms. That he's not willing to die. Um, he, he dares somebody to, uh, try and stop a, a trans woman from going into a women's restroom. And then there was a news report after that that, that I was showing you from the, the shooting that happened. I guess it was up in, um, Tennessee where the kids were, um, killed and, and, and everything. So, you know, our, um, um, our county, Gwinnett County Commission, they had a pride day or whatever, and, uh, what people do with their lives or whatever, I can have my opinions on them and everything and what I believe is right and what's not. But I don't, what, I, I personally don't understand. I have another sep- different, separate question for you. But what I don't understand is how with all of this stuff that's going on, that's attached to that community going on, that we have some type of, uh, parade. And here's what it says, June 29th, yesterday Chairwoman Hendrickson recognized June as Pride Month in Gwinnett. Pride is a, uh, matter of fact, I can pull this up so the, uh, let me see if I can pull it up so the audience can see what I'm reading. Pride is a month, uh, it is the positive stance against discrimination and violence toward individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, and promotes the self-affirmation, dignity, and equal rights and visibility of the LGBTQ community. Pride Month is a ti- time to remember the gift that is our remarkable diversity, which makes us stronger as we continue to pursue equity, acceptance, and, uh, freedom for all. So that, that, that sounds like, um, you know, like a, something that Martin Luther King would say based on somebody being marginalized because of the, the color of their skin. Now, let me, let me say this again. What people decide to do at the age of 18, decision of the direction they decide to go, that, that's their business. I mean, this is, this is, this is America. It, it is what it is and that, and these people should not be jumped on and beat and, you know, or, or anything like that. But I just don't understand how, uh, my, my question for you is gonna be something altogether different, but it ties in. There are, uh, trans people, shooting people, um, people that are coming forward, talking about how the, the surgery and things that they have went through have caused them, um, mental despair in, 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 in everything. And I, I wanna know your thoughts on whether you believe or feel like anything that's associated with pride should be promoted by our school system? Should it be, should there be flags hanging up and, you know, stuff like that in the schools promoting pride? That's, that's my question for you.
Yeah, um, that's a very specific question that I would have to know what the current policy is for Gwinnett County schools. And I don't know what the current policy is.
Okay. Outside of the current policy, what, what are your thoughts on that?
On flying.
Promoting, promoting pride in schools associated with being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, uh, self-affirmation and S2 or whatever has been added to the, uh, the, the.
I'm just trying to make, make sure I understand your question. Are you saying kids wearing a shirt?
No, 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 no. That's, that's freedom of speech. I'm talking about the school and the school teachers hanging up, um, flags and different stuff in classrooms.
Yeah.
That, that, that promote, um.
Yeah, and I'm not avoiding the question. I'm just, I'm just responding by saying it would, whatever the current policy is for not just that group of people, but for Black Lives Matter, for KKK, for Enter Your Group, whatever the policy is for that particular organization that wants to promote their ideology in the school system. I would have to fall upon what that, what that policy is. Um, I, I don't think we should get in the space of restricting free speech from, from kids wearing. I don't think we should, I don't think that's appropriate to.
I know, but what I'm asking is, is there, there is obviously a vote when it comes to policies and different things. Is that how it works? Okay, what is your stance? Not, not what is, you gonna go in there and say, hey, well, this policy is already in place. You know, I gotta, I gotta do my due diligence and follow the guidelines because this was written before me.
Right, right.
But where, where, where do you stand? This is what the people that are watching the podcast, this is an answer to the question. They, where do you stand? Because that policy is where, is already stood and you walked into it. And then you can't go in there with like, with an iron hammer and smash it up. People, people understand that part.
Yeah, yeah, I can always make recommendations to, uh, any, any new policy. Um, and again, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding the, the context or maybe the scenario. If you're saying, can a teacher put up a, 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 a pride flag in their classroom? Is that what you're asking?
Pride flag, uh, because they're government official. So when you, when you put something up from that aspect, your, your role is a little bit different than somebody just, just walking into the school.
Teacher, can that, and I'm just trying to understand the context. Can that teacher today put up a pro-gun flag?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
So I, yeah, I don't know. So I would say if they can, if a teacher can put up a pro-gun flag, if a teacher can put up a pro, insert, enter your political affiliation blank. If they can do that, then I, I don't understand how we can say this teacher can promote their ideology on a particular thing and, and someone else can. I'm assuming it's no for all of that. I'm assuming it's no for, you can't fly your, uh, twas, twasika flag. You can't fly your, in, enter whatever political divisive term you want to enter, you know? You can't fly that thing in, in, in classrooms. Uh, you would have to add that flag to that same group because it's, it's all in the same group to me is how I would categorize it. I don't know if I'm answering your question and I'm not attempting to avoid the question, um, but I'm just saying that this, that, that one group is one of many groups. It's not, it's not one group that is different than other thoughts or affiliations or groups that exist inside of the political spectrum or in, or inside of our lives. That's one of, of many groups where the rule applies to all, not just to that one group.
So, so no matter if it's a political affiliation or, or not, so what, what you're saying is, um, the, the.
I'm saying there's a current, I'm saying there's a current rule that prevents you from flying something in the classroom based on your ideology that should also prevent them from doing the same thing and them being any other group, not just the group you just referenced.
Right. So what, but you, you still didn't answer my question. My question is, what is, what is, what is your stance on that particular, that particular?
That's not affiliated with Gwinnett County School Board policy?
Yeah, because you, because your opinion is the stance that you take that will, you might vote if, based on law or whatever the case, but people wanna know what, what you think about it. Because people are making decisions based on what it is that they, they say this, what they feel is best for students. And the, the LGB, that, that is a, a choice that's being put in front of kids that they probably, because that, that has to do with a sexual decision. Let's just, just call it what it is. Because what other purpose does it, does it serve outside of that? I don't see any. It's a sexual decision that's being made and it's that person's, person's business. And, um, you know, this is, this is my position, my personal stance, you know, on, on it or whatever the case may be. I, I wouldn't make a decision for it, but I'm asking you, what decision, do you believe that kids should be promoting something that influences this, you can be what you wanna be sexually, because that's what it is. that influences this, you can be what you wanna be sexually, because that's what it is. Okay? You can be what you wanna be sexually, make your sexual choice. Should that be promoted and, and put up by our administration to our kids in front of them? Because it's promoting something. And that's what it's promoting. And if it's otherwise, let, fill me in. Let me know what those things are.
Yeah, I would, I would still answer it in, in the same manner I've answered before is, you know, depending on what the current, it, I, I don't single out a group. I don't single out a particular group, um, when it comes to their political affiliation. I don't, I don't single out, um, I don't, I don't single out groups that way because I look at the behavior. And so, and, and we shouldn't single out groups. We should look at, at behaviors and to be consistent in, in what every group is trying to do. So my response to your question would be, if it's okay for one group to do it, then it has to be okay for the other group to do it. If it's not okay for one group to do it, then it's not okay for the other group to do it. Now I'll end with, I'll end that question with this. Um, we are supposed to love everybody, loving one another regardless of your political affiliation or regardless of your group, regardless of your orientation, regardless of, you, and, and you said this as much as well. Um, it, it doesn't condone, uh, abusive behavior or physical violence against a certain group just because you disagree with their choices. Um, but at the end of the day, you're supposed to love one another. And whatever the current rule is for any political group or group affiliated with an ideology, whatever the rule is for them in promoting their thing in schools, all the groups must abide by that same ruling, that same policy.
Right. But I, I also know if, if you love somebody, you tell them the truth.
Say it again?
I say when, when, when we say we love someone, we tell them the truth.
You tell them the truth?
Yes. We tell them the truth based on, and I, based on, uh, you, they can have a policy positions and everything else like that. But we, we tell them the truth. And there, there, uh, let me ask you this question then. How many genders are there? Cause these are questions that the audience wanna know.
Sure.
How many genders are there? Is that based on policy? But how many genders are there? Is it more than two? Or is it just one?
I'm not, yeah, there's male and female, but I, I guess I'm losing the, I'm losing the context of the question as it applies to, uh, you know, Gwinnett County school system.
Well.
Are we saying that we're looking at introducing more genders into the school system? Is that what?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking you, no, I'm just asking you how many genders are there in, in your, do you, how many genders do you believe there are?
Yeah. Yeah. Male, female.
Okay. So two. Okay. So does thi, does what someone believes, not believes, just, just say believe, people do things a, a lot of times because they're trying to move an agenda for, which they could be promoting an abject lie or whatever. Or they do things based on what they know are, are true and what reality is. And, um, that's why I asked you about the, the flag. Because what that flag says and what it represents is not the truth. This is my view on it. It's not, it's not Leroy's view.
Right.
It, you know, so when people are just watching this podcast, this, well, you, the audience have had questions for him or whatever the case may be. It's promoting something. We, we're supposed to be those that we love, which is our, our children. At the point where I put it up and I put it on my wall as a teacher, instruction, that's, that's instructor. That is a huge position in kids' lives. And that's why we both know with the background of sports.
Right.
Kids' lives are changed.
Right.
Through experiences, through teaching.
I think the difference in you and I is, is you're, you're singling out a particular group and, and I wouldn't single out a particular group. I think that's dangerous territory for us to single out a particular group because of what we believe that group or you believe that group promotes. Wha, what I'm saying is, as a policy writer and as a leader of the Gwinnett County school system, all groups must be treated the same. And so if there is a policy that restricts a particular group from doing one thing, then that policy can't only point to that one group. That, that just, that doesn't make sense to me to do that.
So what was, what would be the difference when that same group, um, turn around and say, hey, well, I would need to go in a, a, a girl's bathroom, you know, and I'm a male? Is that group not, wouldn't be singled out at that point to say, hey, uh, uh, so-and-so, uh, you're a biological man?
Right.
You know, what, what happens at that point? Because this is going to get hard. And I'm asking these questions because it, this is going to get hard because of where we are in, in, in right now, now today.
And, and so I am not aware of any changes in our school system when it comes to, um, I guess gender identity and, and who can go in what bathroom. Um, I'm not sure if that's what you're alluding to or what you're asking. Um, so I would, and I, I haven't heard of any examples, uh, yet to your point. Uh, this is, this is things that are, are coming up, uh, in our communities and in the public and at work and in a bunch of different places. So, uh, I, I, I think there's male, female. And, um, if, if someone believes there is a, a reason for a male to go into a, a female bathroom or vice versa, I, I think we have to, uh, address and deal with that when, when that happens. And I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that means, uh, writing a specific policy that says thou shall not, or that means something else. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, it is important that we make sure our youth and kids are safe. And, and if that means, um, you know, um, I, calling out something specifically that hasn't been drafted yet, then that's something we'll address and make that tough, hard decision. Um, I just, I'm not aware of anything that's in progress right now.
All right. Um, so is there anything specific that you wanna tell the, the audience, uh, before you go? I think we asked all the questions that, um, they had infused with a few other questions that I had in general. As far as, you know, tell them, um, you know, how to follow you and how to contribute to your campaign and everything.
Yeah, yeah. You can find me on, um, on Facebook at Renell for District One, uh, O-N-E. And, um, website, uh, rennellfordistrictone.org. Um, there's a support page you can click on in either of those options to donate to the campaign. Um, most what I, I, obviously financial support would be great, but having conversations and, and understanding people's story and hearing what their concerns and, and which direction they wanna see the school system to go is more important to me. Uh, but, um, yeah, either of those options are where you can reach out to me. Uh, love to interact and have conversations with folks.
All right. It's been a pleasure having you on. Uh, Leroy, just hang on for a second. There it is, folks. Leroy Renell for District One of Gwinnett County Public School Systems. Make sure you like, share and subscribe to the podcast. Um, if you have any questions, uh, you can jump on the video in the comments. Uh, I think Leroy will be on there answering questions. He said you can reach out to him. Um, transparency is important. Uh, we hope we got all the questions asked that you all had in our, uh, comment section and that everyone's been sending to us. Uh, make sure you like, share, subscribe to the War Room. We're out.
War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.